I'll open the meeting. I'm Corus Charles Wheaton, Executive Cleveland, John Malcolm. Anybody want to comment on the minutes and the motion to accept?
Sorry to interject, were there any, did you have any additions or additions to the agenda, or did that look okay?
I don't think so.
I know we have Julie here who was up during treasurer's memo stuff, but...
I actually have a, I have something that I would like to ask of the board.
Yeah, from the chair.
Oh, yeah, so that, I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to add.
In other words, I have no extra additions.
Hi, Bob.
Good night.
Bob Wood made a motion, and it wasn't, yeah. Number eight on the second page, the mover was Bob.
Bob Wood. Jones.
I assume it must be Jones.
Thank you. Talking about the Wood property.
Sure. It's number eight, but it's on the next page, top of the next page. I think that's probably meant to be Bob Jones.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other additions or corrections to the minutes of our last regular meeting? Now, can I have a motion to accept with the correction of on the Wood property, Bob Jones, and we scratched out the name Wood.
Mike?
Everyone, sorry I'm late. About second page.
Can I hear a second? Motion made in second, all laws in favor to accept the minutes?
Aye.
Good, good. Michael, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Okay Chuck, thank you for starting. Appearances. Right?
Well, I'm gonna do us a reading, Mike. Probably gotta put this down over here, I guess. I'm gonna take us back to the first of April 2018. Letter from Banyer to Zonia for reference for zoning appeal to Eric Mack. Says, "Sir, since November 2017, I applied for a zoning permit with Eric Mack, Zona Commission. My property, 541 Briar Hill Road, West Pollock, is an agricultural industrial zone area. At the time of the procurement of my property, the zoning was in place with a 30-foot easement on the road, and the property had place, in place, a septic building and electrical permitting. I am interested in making a school training business." He says that right in there, "A school training business venture that will consist of no electricity, no septic, and no other necessary utilities essentially equating to 100% off-grid, no environmental impact to the property." He goes on to say, "I would like to insert my rights to appeal to denial of the zoning permit dated January 2018." That was on April 1st. On May 29th, Eric Mack sent a letter to Daniel S. Banyer. This letter is to inform you that you're in violation of the zoning bylaws, Article 8, Section 2, violation being a building and land use without an approval or permit. This violation has been confirmed based on knowledge of a structure and use of the property. Follow-up by myself, conservation, conversations, and the Development Review Board hearing backed this up. You will have seven days from the date of this letter to correct the matter, after which further action will be taken. You may submit a zoning permit application within the above-mentioned designated timeframe. Failure to confirm to the conditions of this violation within the time period will render the notice of violation final decision on the violation addressed in this office." And it was signed by Eric Mack, and it was hand-delivered by Eric, and also mailed to Hyde Park. Now, Article 8 is Administration of Enforcement. No building construction or land development may commence, and no land destruction may be devoted to a newer change use within the municipality without a zoning permit duly issued by the zoning administrator in accordance with Section 4449 of the Act. Mr. Banyer has changed the use of the property from residential to commercial without any permits issued. He continues to develop the land for slate bridge or gunfighting business. Now, under Section 5 exemptions, no zoning permits shall require for following activities along as such activities are exempt by operation of Vermont law, hunting, fishing, and trapping, and that goes on with that paragraph that we've heard so many times here. It does not, not support fire ranges or rotten gun clubs, which the purpose of these bylaws should define as outdoor recreation facilities. As of date, we stand before the board for a year. As of date, we want to say thank you to actually to Eric Mack for denying that first permit, because if we, if he hadn't done that, we wouldn't even have known there was a gunfighting business going on in our own. So for that, I appreciate that. Eric and I have had our ups and downs, but that I do appreciate. And that was the only tip that we had when it was going on after a couple of years of operation. And we heard from the environmental court, and now we ask, we want it enforced. Now, our, as of tonight, it's 252 days that Banyer has been in violation from the letter of Eric Mack. 252 days. And according to Article 4451, penalties for non-compliance with the bylaws is up to $200 a day, per day, fine. And I want to know when we're gonna start collecting this, this money. This money goes back to the municipality. Banyer wanted to know how many hours John Thrasher had billed from Briar Hill. He demanded that, John gave it to him. That money that we spent on this issue should come out with these penalties. This man should be penalized for not complying with the bylaws. And now I've heard he started another building. That's just your say. I have no proof, but I heard through the grapevine that a third building is already started with no permit. I want to know when are you gonna start collecting the penalties? When is Hal Wilkins gonna start collecting these fines? It's his obligation to the town of Pollock to do that. It's in his zoning administrator's handbook, and it's in our bylaws. And it's in 4451 on the statutes. So I would like you to put a little pressure on him and find out why we are not collecting penalties yet. It's at 252 days today. That's all I have right now at this point in the meeting. Thank you.
Michelle?
Just like to thank Ray for saying what we're all thinking does a good job. I know you guys are working, but keep on working, keep on plugging for us. I second everything he's got to say, and this town can do with that cash. I mean, we're hurting for nickels and dimes, well, there you go, that's a big chunk of change.
I can tell you in regards to that, that Thursday, there's gonna be an executive session meeting of the DRB.
I did hear about that.
Including John Thrasher.
Yeah.
With Hal, and they've, they've been working through the process to make sure that we have everything in a row, so that everything that we do can be substantiated, and we don't have to go back.
If I might, Mike, in that same respect, any penalties that are placed on that property, go with the property. And if the penalties, if the fines are sold that nobody pays them, when that property is sold, those penalties go with the property. So the town, if the town puts a lien on the property, has that lien on at the sale time.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to add from the Briar Hill group? John?
As Ray said, I'd like to find out why nobody's been up there to inspect. I mean, the tax assessors haven't been up there. It's Hal's job to go up there, and he has legal right to go up there.
Well, we're making sure that everything is correct, so that we don't do anything that can affect us. We have, we've gone over all these things, he's getting most, as much information as he can from John Thrasher, so that we don't open ourselves up to problems due to the fact that there's, there's fine wording and stuff and all of that that dictates how we can handle that situation. So we're making sure we're going by 100% by the book, so everything that we come up with stays. Bob?
A couple of things. I have, I think you have, they have copies of the, that...
Agreement, the mutual aid agreement?
So I don't know if you had any problems with it or any changes to it, if not...
I read it, and nothing seemed out of the ordinary today. What do you guys think?
Looks fine by me.
Yeah. So then I guess we can, somebody want to make a motion in a second, we'll prove it? Somebody want to make a motion? Do we enter in this public works agreement?
I'll make the motion, sort of enter into the public work agreement.
Second on that motion?
No, second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post carried.
Thank you. The next thing, this time of the year, we, I put together the local, you know, we're required by the state to put together a local emergency operations plan. They changed the template, they have a new template, putting that together, so I'm going through and putting all the information in that template, and I'll be back to you in April, you know, to get a signature on it, the usual annual signature. But in the new template, there's a couple of things I need to ask how you want to handle it. They have a section here on purchasing, when the emergency operations center is active, this is their wording, the state has this wording. The EOC director may authorize the purchase of supplies, equipment, services as required, up to a total of X, whatever you want to put in. Purchases over that require approval of select board. If the select board cannot reasonably meet, because of the emergency, any available select board member, which action must be ratified by the whole board at the earliest convenience of meeting. So there's a section in here that you would authorize the emergency management director to make purchases. Frankly, I don't, I don't, I don't know what purchases I would make anyway, even in an emergency. I don't, I don't see where I would do any. We could just strike that all out, or you can put a figure in there if you want, it's really up to you. I think, though, probably the person who needs authority, and there's another section later, is somebody like Keith Mason, who, you know, he may need, he should have some kind of authority. I haven't spoken to Keith about this, by the way, I saw him the other day and I forgot to ask him about it, but I don't think he has any spending, really written spending authority, right?
Yes, he does.
Does he?
What do we have for a cap on it? Did he?
600, I think.
Okay.
No purchases over 600 shall be made by any town officer employee without prior approval, approval on the select board.
So in an emergency, though, so $600, he has approval, but if he, if...
He does, this is just general, any, any employee.
Okay.
So you could put that down under, under your, and then we're kind of just going by the, going right along with it, so. So you can put that down as your, your spending cap is $600?
That's, that's fine. I think, though, for him, I'm looking at...
But looking at some kind of emergency?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, and maybe the way it's worked informally has worked, and we can leave it that way. I don't want to make it more complicated than we need to, but in the event you have, for instance, major trees down all over the town, this big ice storm, and there's roads are closed, and he has to call in, you're in, what are you doing?
I don't do anything.
Oh, you're in the camp? Oh, okay. If he, if he has to call in tree people, right, to help him clear the roads, because, you know, what, that's gonna be more than $600 probably. And the question is, you know, I don't know what the procedure is now, does he get ahold of a select board member?
Generally speaking, he's always tried to reach out to one, at least one select board member, and then it was their duty to kind of share it, kind of decide and see, and then share that information with the rest to see how everyone else felt.
Yeah, so, okay, that's fine, this question, the question I have is, what do you want written into the emergency operations plan in terms of emergency, emergency purchasing? That's really the question. And again, I, I really don't need a lot of emergency purchasing power for emergency management. Most of the requests I would make would be to the state, and that, that comes as part of, you know, it comes really for free. If I ask the state to do something, and they come, they do it, that, you know, that comes from, the state pays for that. But I can see situations where he's calling in tree guys, or he's calling in, like we had the excavator, you know, we had the, he called in the excavator, which he spoke to you about. So I don't know how you want to, how you want to word that, you can think about it, we still have till April to put this together. The other thing it talks about, do we have any standing municipal contracts?
Sure. With...
With who?
Assessor.
Oh, these are municipal contracts with businesses, so...
Oh, okay.
Not individual, separate businesses?
Businesses, yeah.
Like with excavating companies or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, right. And they...
That they would, that we would instantly bring them in for emergencies, stuff like that?
Right.
No, he's always just, he's always just looked for whoever he had, was available in the area he felt.
And that's worked well, right? I mean, you haven't had any issues with that.
Now, there's always, I mean, there's, right now, it's like at least four people he could call instantly to...
Yeah.
Kind of different areas of the town, too.
Yeah, we, we can leave it that way. We, we don't have to make this complicated. For bigger towns and cities, you know, they have to, it's a little bit more complicated in their situations. Here, it's, it's a little bit more informal, and I'm not, I'm not against it being informal, especially if it's worked fine in the past, you haven't had any problems.
Yeah.
I'll, can we just do it the way we have in our other, I mean, we have in our regular purchasing?
Just put down $600, and then if he has to go over that, he just gets ahold of one of us, and...
Yeah, we can, that's fine.
I mean, in an emergency situation, it's pretty much, you know, we, we gotta do what we have to do, and that's...
Put it out to bid.
No, that's, that's the thing. The only thing is, there's, in this town, it's not so bad, because there's five of you, so he can get, the approval can be from any one of you, and that's, that's, that's really what it's...
Well, over that, over that, nor, I mean, if we go directly to the bylaws, but in an emergency, I guess, if any one of us sided with him, it seems like that would...
That's the way I'll write it up.
That sound good with you, Bob?
And I'll come back to you with the, with the wording, so...
I mean, because like, well, like with the excavators, he called me, and I said, "Do it," and then I think I called you next, right Chuck? And Chuck spread the word, and, I mean, everybody understood, but it just, it was good that everybody knew what was going on. Bobby already knew, because he was getting it ready, and...
Right, right.
It just all, but we just tried to spread the word. If something comes up, we always try and spread the word to make sure everybody understands what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, that's really, I'll, I'll write it up, and then I'll bring it back to the board, and if you like to, you know, we can change the wording.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Do you want a copy of?
I need a copy of the signed...
You do.
Oh, there it is, thanks, that's all I need.
You got any?
Do you have the purchasing thing?
If Kristen could copy.
Yeah.
Do you have any suggestions for health officer?
No, I haven't come up with any.
Yeah, is there any fish in for us?
No. I haven't, my phone hasn't been ringing off the hook for that job.
Don't talk too much, Mike.
Okay, Julie, is your, do you want to go now, or do you want, is it general, or is it regarding the treasures?
Uh, it's, it's not regarding the treasures.
Okay, so go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, wait, let me show that Kristen, so she could...
That's fine.
Yeah, so she could make any notes necessary.
Yep.
I guess we should, we should put it, have Elizabeth put it out there that...
Yeah, Kristen was also talking to me earlier, she was gonna maybe do something.
Okay, put it out, out there that we're looking for health officer, and...
Thanks, thank you very much.
Ready for a carry-on?
Yes, go ahead, Julie.
So as you all know, I have accepted the position on work with Judy, and I have been able to sort of wrap my mind around making peace with the fact that it is a conflict for my school director position. But at my meeting, at my school board meeting last night, the superintendent said that they had a difference of opinion with the BSBA, which had weighed in on the conflict, and that they were willing to go to bat for me to be able to maintain my position as a school director while still working with the treasurer's office. So I was just here to ask if perhaps I could get a letter from the select board weighing in on this to go to the BRSU, because they have decided to take up arms for me. Basically, now that we're, you know, a unified district, this conflict that used to make all the sense in the world doesn't make sense anymore. Our board doesn't write warrants, we don't sign checks, the BRSU is authorized to pay all of our bills on our behalf. So the only money that changes hand is literally a piece of paper that is sent into this office from the state, and an identical piece of paper is sent to the treasurer of our district, which is not, which it won't be me. We're independent, we're both independently, independently audited. It just kind of doesn't make sense to me that this conflict still exists, so I was just looking for a little bit of support from the board.
To me, it seems like a great idea that you could stay on, so I, what does the rest of the board think?
Yeah.
Does anybody have any, any question, any, any way in on whether, John?
No, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Well, what, if we write something up, what particularly, what kind of wording would you like?
I think I would just be looking for, you know, confirmation that the, well, one that we have dual signing, so even if, even though there is a check to the Meadowwee District that I sign, at least one of you has to sign it as well, so that's one. And two, just that there, there isn't, you know, you are signing warrants, there's one tonight, and you have the sheet of paper from the state to look at yourself, so you can make sure that the amount of money, you know, you're sure the amount of money that's coming from this office to the Meadowwee District is exactly what it's supposed to be. And, I mean, I guess I can't ask you to speak to the fact that our board doesn't sign checks, our superintendent can speak to that fact, but just to the dual signing, the, you know, piece of paper that you verify from the state. And honestly, I guess, spitballing here, but, I mean, our ballot is uncontested for every, every race, it's very difficult to find people to fill these school director positions most of the time, so it doesn't really make sense to me to bottleneck the applicants this way.
And where will we send it?
I would ask that you just send it to Jackie Wilson at the BRSU, and then she will be speaking to, I think, the VSBA and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns on my behalf, so if she had all of that information, then she could forward it on to any necessary peoples.
Would you want to get together with Kristen and kind of draft something, and then we can look at, how, what over the timeline are we looking at?
I think, well, I mean, I think we need to kind of try to have something going before May, when I would be moving beyond the assistant position, but I think that if we can get it to her, if we can draft a letter between this meeting and the next meeting and have you guys sign it, then that would probably be better to have it sooner than later.
That's what I was wondering, if, if we could wait the two-week cycle.
Yeah.
So you and Kristen could work together and draft a letter, and make sure you cover all the points necessary, and, and bring it back to us at the next...
And I can send it to all before the next meeting for your review, and then you can act on it.
That would be great.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all for being so lovely.
Okay, well said. Ben, do you have anything?
I'm here actually in question about my deed. Tomorrow marks one year that you guys cash my check on the sale of that property.
Chuck, do you have anything to add to that?
So I received a deed last week, and in the deed, it stated there must be a 30-foot, right, a 30-foot, 30-foot wide berm...
We waited that.
Hold on, I'm talking, Chuck. There was a 30-foot wide berm that was mandated, now that was nowhere stated in any sale of that property, of that bid, and it was not stated in the agreement, or the, or the, it was not stated in the draft deed. So last minute, it got slipped in there that there was supposed to be a 30-foot wide berm, which is unheard of. I don't know if you guys know what MSHA ruling is, or what ruling is for most quarries or mines, but it's half height, mid axle height of the largest vehicle on the premises, and I don't know where you guys came up with a 30-foot wide berm, other than you're trying to tie up the property because it possibly didn't go the way that maybe you guys wanted it to go, I don't know. But it seems so that, I keep getting excuses, I got an excuse that your attorney was, was sick, and it got tied up for weeks and weeks, I didn't hear anything back, and now I heard the other day that John Thrasher had had some surgery, and he was sick, and I'm just, I'm here to question why I have not received a deed when I paid for that property. Tomorrow will mark one year that you guys cash my check on that property, and I've yet to receive a deed. It all started out with your adverse possession on the property, Mike, when Gary Barline lost the bid. I don't know the exact date, but it was two, three weeks after I had lost the bid to your son-in-law. All of a sudden, you, which you guys pressured the town to sell that, and Gary lost the bid, and then all of a sudden, you, you put an adverse possession, adverse possession claim on the property. I've agreed to all your settlement agreements, I even agreed to give you the piece of property that you tried to adverse possess. We made a settlement agreement, I basically bent over backwards with you guys, and then you throw in the... And then you throw in this thirty foot wide berm at the end that was nowhere in the sale of that property or in the draft deed. And I'm just wondering where you guys came up with that.
You'll have to address all that to Chuck, because I recuse myself from all dealings with that property.
When's the last time you spoke with your attorney?
Yeah, it was actually yesterday morning.
And did he mention any comment that he had with?
He mentioned that he had to, he had to hear back from John, that John had had some medical issues and, um, he had some surgery Thursday and he was out of the office Friday. So where did that thirty foot wide, wide berm come, come from? Who, who, who's?
I know, we waived it. That's why I'm surprised that your attorney didn't.
Because that's unheard of. I've spoke with people that, that are, that are in the mining and the quarry industry, and they said that is absolutely absurd. Thirty feet wide, that's, that's not even state regulation. It's not MSHA regulation. Where did this thirty foot, it's, it's a smoke and mirror deal, I feel. It's, it's tie it up and drag it out. And, and I'm wondering why you guys continue to drag it out. Is it because, is it because the chair selectman's son-in-law lost the bid? That's my question.
I think he needs to respond. He's been trying to address your, your question.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to say what I wanna hear, because.
I know, but he has an answer for you, so just so I would let him hear you, you know.
Okay, so I will contact John Thrasher, and I'm sure he'll contact your attorney. John's comment with me, as of the end of last week, was, it was all waived for any berm. It's whatever you wanna do when you start working that, we would recommend that you would have a berm. I'm not saying that it needs to be thirty feet, because it's my understanding that
Is there any plans to put a berm around the rest of the quarry?
Or whatever it is.
It's, it's not under, it's not subject to MSHA, because it's not an active mine.
That's right.
It's stockpile, but I'm telling you, even if it was an active mine, MSHA would require that it would be mid axle height of the largest vehicle on the premises. I've been MSHA trained, and actually, in my previous place of employment, I was MSHA certified. I have a booklet, I looked this up. I know what the ruling is. Um, I'm wondering where the thirty feet came from. Thirty feet wide at that, if you go thirty feet wide, you're talking how high? I mean, that's, that's, is there plans to blast in that quarry, or is there, is there plans for something? I mean, what is?
No, that, I, I don't know where that came from. Um, it's my understanding that it isn't there in the new paperwork.
Is there plans for a road right away through there?
Have you seen any of the new paperwork with your attorney yet?
The last thing I saw was the, the deed that stated thirty feet wide. And that got slipped in there out of nowhere. I'm just wondering where it came from, or whose idea, whose, whose, whose idea, was that John Thrasher's idea, the thirty foot wide berm? Cause I mean, it didn't just, it didn't just come out of nowhere. Who put that in there?
Actually, it was John Thrasher's idea. Before anything went down with that property, Tim Muse Hughes sent him an email asking him his opinion on if we were to sell that property, anything we should do, and that's from the very conception of the property, excuse me, and John Thrasher said.
You're accusing yourself from all this conversation.
I recused myself from all the activity that went involved with the transaction.
So why are you talking?
Because I'm making a comment about what the, you're having a problem with. The fifty foot, he, John Thrasher suggested in an email that we put a fifty foot right away along the edge of that quarry in a berm to protect anything from coming into ours. There was no regulation about how high it was.
How come it wasn't stated in the sale of that property?
I don't know that, but I can.
Did, did that come after your boy lost it?
No, it wasn't. It was long before my son, in, my stepson, lost a bid. And it's also important.
Is there pla- plans for, uh, is there plans for a right of way for grid, or, or a pipeline, or something to come through there?
Those are just suggestions that John said when we initially talked to him about the property being trans- sold. That's all I can tell you. Before anything went down, before there was any surveys or anything. Do you guys recall that?
Yes.
And it's also important to notice why you're saying everything you said. One thing in the transaction that was left out is the town refunded you two thousand dollars for your inconvenience on the cost of this property.
I would much rather have the property that you decided that you had rightful ownership to after your son-in-law lost the bid.
Not gonna get it.
Two thousand dollars, the two thousand dollars is peanuts compared to that road frontage that you decide to adverse possess. And push come to shove, I gave in and made a settlement agreement with the town to get my deed, and I believe there was a timeline on that too, and it was supposed to come through sooner than later, and you guys continue to drag this out. And I'm asking why?
I can tell you that everything that I did with my lawyer was in a timely fashion. We responded to everything that the town.
He was sick for about a month and I didn't hear from him.
I'm gonna interject here and move along, because everybody gets two minutes. That's what, how it goes, and if there's, unless there's anything else that.
Let me, uh, let me see if I get, uh.
That's all right, I'm used, I'm used to getting pushed aside.
It's not pushing you aside.
Yeah, it, it absolutely is.
There's just nothing that we can act on.
It's a smoke and mirror. It's a smoke and mirror.
There's just nothing more to be acted upon, so.
And I think all that was read in the minutes was Chuck stated that possibly the slag man, Mike, got pushed into the quarry. I never read anything about fifty foot, thirty foot.
Well, it's not a word, minutes aren't a word for a word.
Well, I know, and they get revised too.
Yeah, but the purpose, the purpose of the minutes is to, is to collect motions and decisions. So I don't ever quote, even ask the V L C two about that. It's nothing against anybody. It's an intention to make everybody informed of decisions.
The town had no, 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 no notion of the rights that that slag pile held over our personal property. It held dumping and rubbish rights until right after my son-in-law lost the bid, and then all of a sudden Mike stated to the selectmen that it pinched on his property, because it held dumping rights over our property and Mike's property. So shortly after the bid was lost, Mike all of a sudden knew what rights were held over both of those properties. But nobody knew that before the sale.
Yeah, I can't speak, I wasn't.
Yeah, so. It's, um, these are all, these are all questions I have, and clearly I'm not getting any answers. Everybody's tight lipped on it, so.
I'll, I'll loosen my lips and say, attacking us is, is not, is not making progress. There's no smoke and mirrors here. We're not supporting Mike. We'd love to have gotten this thing done eight months ago.
I've done nothing but work with you guys on this and bent over backwards, and I still have yet to receive my deed that I paid for one day shy of a year ago.
I can understand that. It was complicated between the town, between interlock properties that many of us weren't aware of, of legacies, and I, I just, uh, would like you to refrain from attacking us personally.
Nobody was aware of the pertinence is that it held over our deed either, until shortly after it was lost to the.
There was a lot of things, the town didn't know things when we put it out to bid. I can speak for myself, I won't speak for the other guys.
Because the chair selectman and his son-in-law pressured you guys to sell it.
I wish you would stop saying that.
No one pressured us to sell it.
You're insulting us by saying that.
If you guys go back into the minutes, it states right in there, that they continued to say, you guys should sell it to me, you should sell it to me. And you guys made the right choice by putting it out to bid. I will say that. But I'm questioning.
And you won the bid.
I wished I hadn't, to be honest with you at this point.
Anyhow, so, I can't, I can only speak for myself. I did not feel pressured.
Almost as much money as I paid for the property and attorney fees, and it's costing even more frustration and stress. And at this point, um, I honestly wish I hadn't won the bid, but I'm not giving in now.
I will contact John Thrasher.
I would like that deed, or we're gonna be in litigation. Because it's been far too long, and you guys.
He's got all the paperwork, Ben.
I'm just letting you guys know.
John has a hundred percent of the paperwork. And it's my understanding that John contacted your attorney. That's why I'm surprised that you haven't heard.
I spoke with him yesterday.
My understanding that this, when I saw you come through tonight, I thought that you wanted the guardrail cut, so you could stack to make your right of way.
I'm not playing many rooms up there.
I thought this was a dumb deal two weeks ago.
Well, I thought so too. I thought it was supposed to be done back February, uh, I guess you guys cashed my check February fifteenth. The bidding, you accepted the bid on the thirteenth, I believe. That's off the top of my head.
Well, we all know now that that was a mistake, that the check was cashed. It should have been set in an escrow account.
I assume that you guys thought I didn't have the money, and you thought that it would go to the, the next bidder down, and that's probably why you cashed.
That would, that would not have happened. That's, that's enough. That would not have happened.
It's supposed to go into escrow when you close on a property. You're not supposed to cash the check until you close. The day of the closing at the bank is when the checks get cashed. It's unheard of that you guys should have cashed that check and then held it up this long.
So I'm gonna end the conversation. I will contact John Thrasher. He will contact your attorney.
You will be hearing from a different attorney. Have a nice night.
Anybody else have anything to say? Are there any announcements tonight?
Regarding that.
What's that?
Regarding that statement from Ben. I wanna ask you Chuck, is, did you infer that that thirty foot buffer, that thirty foot berm was taken out of the deed? Out of the requirements or the covenant on the deed? Because right now, there's nothing holding cars back from going right in that quarry hole on town property down there. There's no berm around that quarry. There's a few rocks here and there, and they're not up to half the height of a truck, so.
We know all about it.
We oughta wipe that out of that deed. That thirty foot, uh, should be removed. Should be deleted from that, from that trail agreement. That's my opinion.
I'm not.
Okay.
Gonna speak publicly any more than what I have with the rest of the people here. That's, it's, we're moving on.
Any announcements?
Yes, um, I've completed the highway and bridge restrictions for twenty nineteen, so the, when you go online and you have to go on and update weight, weight requirements and whatnot, so we are all up to date, and our weight limits for all of our local bridges, um, and roadways are up to speed. Other than that, you already shared it with the D R B's meeting on the fourteenth for an executive session. Continue several discussions with, um, ongoing litigation issues. I think that's all I have for the next.
Uh, the report from Hal is?
Yes, everybody should have that. Hal's report included an email. Should be right under the planning commission, that one there.
This one?
Yes.
Okay, zoning compliance. The zoning office is making an effort to bring several outstanding building violations zoning into compliance, so as to ensure that all residents are treated equitably and there are no adverse precedents are established. West Polat Commercial Development, the processing facility is moving ahead with the required amendments to the existing Act two fifty permit, testimony to support its conformance with local and regional plans, et cetera. Slate Ridge, the development review board, the zoning administrator and the town attorney will meet, will meet in the next few days, which has been established, it's Thursday, yeah, five thirty, to respond to recent requests from attorneys for the Briar Hill Association for current information, progress report, et cetera. Development review board will meet in the next few days to review and provide comments on Bareline Landscaping Act two fifty amendment, the Slate Ridge facility on Briar Hill, the West Polat Hemp Processing Facility, and other projects. Town of Polat Tarble Subdivision, John Thrasher has provided some updates on the situation. The subdivision process is moving ahead and should be completed shortly. Any questions, the zoning administrator will be glad to provide additional information at any of these items. Anybody have any questions? Keith, I suppose, is resting up?
He's, I'm assuming, yeah, he's probably out. He did share with me that, um, there was an email that came through about complete streets reporting, um, and that is due on Friday, and he said that he'd be taking care of that.
Okay.
I had a question from the citizen, uh, about when do we post roads? When the roads started breaking up the other day.
Yeah.
And someone asked me, when do we post roads to keep trucks from driving? This was in Kelly Hill.
Yeah. Historically, it's kinda up to his decision, you know?
Okay.
I mean, about, that, that last week, it went instantly like that.
Yeah.
But, uh.
Well, basically, it all, this all started, uh, the day we had the flood and, the road that was being used, yeah, Harrock Brook gone to, uh.
Towsley.
Towsley Hill.
Mm-hmm.
So, basically, we tried, we tried to get that back, back in shape, and I understood that the smooth blade wasn't handling it. So they came back and they put the carbide tips on the blade. They went ahead and got that road. I, um, Jamie McClellan, Jeff Junior's, uh, one of his employees asked if it'd be okay if he put, uh, stone on Kelly Hill, uh, where it turned onto Kelly Hill off of one thirty-three. I knew he'd done it before when that particular section of the road, uh, went south. So they are the ones that put the stone in there on their own behalf to try to make it so that their trucks could come in and go out, and they actually, uh, Dorset's trucks were hauling sand, um, last week too, so, from Chet's. So, I mean, those, those two sections of highway, I mean, we don't normally get three or four mud seasons like we have the last couple of years, so.
I think we're gonna have to start preparing for those to be more regular.
Yep, I agree. In the same way with the end of my road on Heatherington Road. It, it got warm that day, they're logging up on the Petrios. He came out at the end of the night, and it was dreadful. I called Keith, they knocked it over the next day, and, you know, they did the best they can, and then Friday, I called him and said, do you have a plan? It's gonna tighten up over the weekend. Well, he says, I, I'm gonna, we're all gonna go out Saturday morning and see what we can do before everything tightens up. So I know they worked on the end of my road and got it better.
I mean, got this, our roads as good as they can.
Right, did they work on your road Saturday too a little bit?
When it froze up.
Right, yeah, so.
No, I was just asking the specifics of how that worked to respond to this lady, but, uh, I mean, I knew what was going on, and I knew stuff was coming out of that pit on Kelly Hill that was trying to remedy other situations.
Right. Even, you know, even posting the road, there's still a lot of, lot of. Even, you know, even posting the road, there's still a lot of, a lot of trucks can get over it too, it doesn't-
Right, right.
It doesn't stop everybody, so. But I think historically, it's been-
Yeah, they came and worked about three and a half hours on Switch Road today with the, with the points on the grader blade trying to smooth it out. But it was on, you know, several elderly people on our road that couldn't get out.
Couldn't even get out.
Across the street, she handicapped, she had her hundred cars. A mile and a half eighty-seven. She couldn't, she bottomed out coming out of the driveway trying to go downhill. We only got a hundred feet to go before we hit pavement.
It was bad.
From New York.
It was bad.
Couldn't go for a switch.
You couldn't go the other way back, back towards the map? Planning Commission. Do we get anything from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, Harry sent along, uh, fairly rank, like the escrow report.
Okay, yeah, I pushed it aside, thought of something else. Modest State will not be in Polat for the meeting of the Select Board on Tuesday, the twelfth. The following is my report on recent activities of the Planning Commission as of January twenty-eighth, 2019. Meeting in progress for made on various initiatives. Zoning Administrator Hal Wilkins reported on proposal to revise zoning permit application fees that the Select Board will need to authorize before they can begin imposing these fees for new applicants. Hal was present to those, Hal was to present those proposals to the Select Board at the twenty-ninth, January twenty-ninth meeting. Revisions of the town unified bylaws, the Planning Commission discussed land uses that were permitted as of the, as of right in Polat zoning district. And there is a dialogue among the commissioners present toward creating more responsible bylaws for the future of the town. I emphasize that vision presented in the town plan must be reflected in the bylaws and vice versa, making the two documents interconnected. The PC will continue to develop definitions of permitted and conditional uses with this outcome in mind. The goal to have a package of recommended updates for approval by the Select Board will coordinate with the study of presentation being prepared in item three. Revisions of the town unified bylaws, form-based codes. The Planning Commission has continued to discuss the benefits of possibly changing the way the land use is governed in the town's village, commercial, and industrial districts. The PPC and the zoning administrator believe that this new zoning method may create a framework for more economically viable commercial and industrial development as well as help maintain compatibility with existing residential areas in two village centers and in the industrial zone. Hal Wilkens, Wilkins promised to provide the PPC with visual graphics to help explain how zoning board may be utilized, ZBC may be utilized in Polat's two villages. The goal remains to complete the study by mid-year to geographic presentation to, with a graphic presentation to the Select Board by the end of August. Economic Development Subcommittee, the Planning Commission Subcommittee tasked with developing the town's economic development plan has been unable to meet due to the members being out of town and inclement weather. The goal, however, is still to complete this plan by the end of the calendar year for incorporated into the 2020 Town Plan Update. Additional items for the Select Board's action or approval. Request to extend commissioner's terms. Uh, Mark Frost expires three, 2019. Extend it to March twenty, twenty-two. Rick Sassa expires three, 2019. Extend to March twenty-twenty-two. Record correction. Can the clerk be, please, have the town Select Board website change, page change to reflect that I am the chair of the PPC and that my terms should show expiring March twenty-twenty-one per Select Board decision at early 2018 meeting? Also, I ask the town Select Board website page change to reflect that Melissa Couch's term was extended to March twenty-twenty-one. Harry Van Meter. Okay.
Would you like me to contact Elizabeth about updating the site?
Yes, please.
Be nice if she could get it out a little earlier, too. The one that just came out was like the day of things that were going on.
Assessors, nothing from the assessors this month, okay. Town Clerk's memo, the town meeting update, the town report has been approved and should be arriving any day. Ballots have arrived, and the first set of absentee went out this afternoon. Email from A and R, one excess municipal access weight permit needs signatures. One liquor license to be signed by all present. Let's do that right now while we're all set. Is everybody in favor of the liquor license? Who's it for?
Lynn Sheldon, Sheldon Store, Sheldon's Market.
Kristen, I have the, uh, the overweight permits, the Duquette forestry. Uh, transport is fine. That one's all set. The RK miles is lacking proof of insurance, and also the restrictions are on there. So before it goes back to them, as long as the restrictions are on there.
Do you know whether to approve with a motion liquor licenses? Somebody wanna make a motion a second to approve the liquor license for Sheldon's Market?
I'll make a motion to accept a liquor license for Sheldon's Market.
May I have a second? Sure, I will. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Letter from Christopher Fervane and John Friedag regarding upkeep of highway infrastructure. Okay. Did you read that over at all or not?
No, I haven't had a chance to.
Okay, do y'all have copies of this? You guys all got copies of this letter from?
Yeah.
Okay, these two gentlemen are from the Waterbury Select Board and the Stratford Select Board. And they're concerned about how the, the shape of the infrastructure is and how the state can fund it. And they're looking at different options. And it looks like there's gonna be some discussion at the state level, how to fund it, and they may need us to require more reports, so.
February fourteenth.
Right, you're gonna go to the State House, bring your letters for support. So, that's what that's all about. If anybody wants to read it, it'll be part of the minutes. Can you make that part of the minutes? Thank you. Um, you shut down early today due to inclement weather, and-
Yeah, looked like the email said four o'clock.
Yeah, or sooner possibly, and have a great evening. Okay. And, oh, the A and R story. Nestle Waters, where are they bottling water? Does it say where? Statewide?
It's just approval to sell it.
Yeah. Okay. Treasures report. Okay, four warrants to be signed. Everybody's looked them over?
Yes.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the warrants.
I hear a second?
I second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. She's switching everything to Berkshire, I think. So it appears that we're switching everything to Berkshire, huh? That's what, this is all.
Okay, yes.
Well, renewing.
Right.
Yeah, a lot of, several things are already-
We had stuff in Berkshire, and now we're-
Soon, that's just an annual renewal.
For signatures.
Okay. Why we don't wait till after March?
Yeah, just have to begin.
Yeah, a couple more weeks and-
Yeah.
Just in case anything changed.
Yeah, I'm surprised they were there tonight.
Emergency Management Director had no report tonight?
Yep, they were just shorts. I figured we'd save paper. Um, Emergency Management Director Bob Morino attended a meeting in bar regarding catastrophic exercise that Polat Emergency Management will participate in in October of 2019. And the EOC was activated on January twenty-fourth to assist in an ice jam slash flood event that occurred midday at the flower broken in the vicinity of the Polat Firehouse. Five homes sustained various levels of flood damage from flooded basements to water damage of first floor flooring. The Polat Fire Department evacuated fire apparatus due to conditions on Route 133. Water height reached approximately eighteen inches on Route 133. A partial erosion of the road bed occurred on Route 133, and V-Trans is aware of the situation. Keith Mason procured an excavator and removed ice from the river, thereby allowing the water to recede. No one was injured during the flood. Polat Emergency Management is in touch with various agencies to aid in the recovery process.
Next one. Just one other thing, um, tax collection went well, and Julie was a big help. And our delinquent tax is about average. Okay, and then we just have to resolve that vacation issue at the, before we're done tonight. Waste water or nothing?
And there's also, sorry, the health officer as well. There was one dog bite reported, and there was a complaint regarding rental housing code enforcement.
Okay.
That's all the details on that.
And nothing from Jeff?
No, I hadn't-
I didn't see anything yet, so.
There's, uh, mail for Jeff back there on his, uh, cookie. I don't know if you wanna drop it off?
Oh, what? Um, a what? Oh, that's just propaganda. He'll, he'll get it. He comes over and drops off stuff anyway. Okay. Older unfinished business.
There's just the FEMA thing to be signed, right?
We did already.
The other item was that email that we had received, um, make sure I keep my ducks in a row. Um, so about, I've been, I contacted Ed Boe about we needed to fill out the form for who we appointed for the commissioners for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And then he also sent me along the, um, regular representative of the Rutland Regional Transportation Council. So I'm guessing he wanted us to-
To do that.
To have both of those.
After we got talking about that, I thought that Eric is the Planning Commission and the Transportation Council. And James Gleck was on the Planning Commission the last time, I think. And I don't know if he's still interested in it or not as an alternate.
I have recollection that we had talked about this because according to the site, this was due to be renewed back in July. So, in the emails, they said, "Oh, no problem, you know, just get it to us when you can." So I'm guessing if they haven't received it. But I had, and I went back through minutes and I couldn't pull anything up, so.
I know Eric was, Eric used to go to all those meetings, so. I don't know if he still wants to, or do you wanna do about?
No.
If Bob doesn't want to either.
So is it, do you want me to contact Eric?
Yeah, ask him if he wants to.
Make sure he wants to keep, keep on keeping on.
Chuck's retired now.
Free, I think it's free dinner, Chuck. Pretty sure.
Because, um-
I don't know, I'm-
It requires-
Keep going like I'm going. I'm afraid I'm gonna be here.
lettuce will be growing soon, Chuck.
They both require the name, street address, town, or et cetera, an email and phone number of the appointed representative and an alternate. So I guess I, I can check in with Eric and I'll check in with James.
Yes.
And to make sure they're both still on board for the Planning Commission. And then I'll see what Eric has to say about transportation.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll just need somebody's signature so we can, I mean, it's February, so I guess two more weeks might not kill us.
Whatever, whatever works, right?
One day at a time.
Yep.
Um, and, okay, one other item, um, so the Meadowway Makers hosted their event here on Saturday. There was some continued work happening upstairs, so it led to the folks coming down here, being relocated, and the event took place down here. As of now, as far as I know, um, the fees have not yet been paid because Helen wanted to confirm that the fee would still be thirty dollars for down here. Um, I said, "I imagine so, but I would confirm with you all," so.
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
It's, it was warm and dry. It's worth thirty bucks, I'd say.
Yeah.
So I'll let her know, and then I'll just remind her hopefully to get that. I don't know how it went. I haven't, I haven't heard. We weren't able to make-
We came down. It was nicely set up, I think.
Yeah, we have several, several-
Heard from a few people that- I heard that, I heard from a few people that it was com- really comfortable in here and.
Yeah.
Nice event.
Excellent.
Yeah, good. Before we, oop, we all know, before we move out all the new business, um, I don't know if I, there's a mold and mildew problem downstairs in the library, in the, uh, air ducts. We'll have to take a look at and see what.
Yep.
I contacted the person that put them in, he didn't get back to me, um, so we'll probably look elsewhere, see what we can do for.
Are they still in business?
I believe he is, yeah, but I'll, I'll give him another call, but, uh.
Who is that?
Uh, I had it written down at home.
Okay.
Yeah, um, Jim Anders told me what it was that, uh, put them in.
Okay, the only, the only other unfinished business we had was the, uh, the carryover of vacation time. Did it?
So did you see my email?
I saw your email, did.
I saw your email, yeah.
Did everybody else get a chance to see it, or?
Yeah.
What, uh?
Do we need to be in executive session?
I don't know that we really do, cause we're not gonna talk about specifics to any one person, it's just a general. Do you see any reason to, or?
No, not until we, not unless we say anything specific or make a final decision or whatever.
If we make, if we just adopt a policy, that's, it's just a policy and. I did not, oh, I got it, I got it.
Do you need the, I did print out the letter from Judy as well as the.
I couldn't print out the, the figures.
Scratch on that from my notes from my phone calls.
Can you get me a copy of that?
I can't print it out through here, but you are welcome to that.
Um, you can't pr-.
I can, oh, I can make you a copy.
Make you, make me a copy.
Does anybody else need a copy?
I know I printed out the letter, but I didn't print out the figures.
Sure, I'll print this.
My new computer and I.
Are not getting all.
Are. Taking a while, we get used to it.
Judy wanted this discussed before Julie left.
Oh, yep.
Yeah.
This. Her email pertains to some neighboring towns.
Uh-huh. Kristen sorted it all out.
Yeah.
What's going to happen to address for, gets out of control.
Do we want to, uh, is this something you wanna talk about? Would you, would you guys feel more comfortable if we talked about it? And, you know, executive session or something, or do you wanna just?
Well, I think there's gonna be names, names.
Well, I don't think we need to say any, any of our, our guys' names.
The three.
Right, right, all three are gonna be held subject to the same, the same policy, so it really doesn't matter.
Right.
Yep.
So.
In my opinion, um, the, uh, vacation time and comp time should be held to a limit. You know, maximum limit, and should, in my mind, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but really shouldn't be carried over, you know, um, I'm thinking a year.
Well, they're not letting, well, why don't you, yeah, why don't you, you did all the work on it, please.
So I called, um, Dorset, Pulteney, and Rupert and asked them about what they did for vacation time for their roads crew. Dorset, um, they've not really run into any issues because they haven't had any fifteen plus year employees, so that's something she said we should be proud of, so that's good. Um, so what they do is their vacation time does not accrue year to year. They'll pay out up to eighty hours at the end of the year. So I was telling Chuck that, let's say, you know, if somebody has a hundred and twenty hours, they've been here for long enough, they only use twenty hours of vacation time, they would lose twenty of them but would get paid out eighty at the end of the fiscal year. And nothing would move forward into the next year and they would get a fresh bank with whatever number of hours they were allotted. Um, what they do is they have a program called Comp Time, where when an employee works overtime, they would have the option to take the overtime hours and put them into a Comp Time Bank. And those, so let's say, you know, you're paving for twelve hours, you could take those four overtime hours and put them in your Comp Time Bank, which those can be used at a later time for, um, vacation, rather than paying the overtime rate. Um, she did not say what they do with the Comp Time Banks, whether or not those can roll over year to year, or if those get paid out, um, she did not go into that, so. She did also make the suggestion, which I included in the email, one of Judy's complaint, or one of the pickups with the way that we're currently doing it is that she can't, she has to do everything manually because Nemrick, the way that she tracks it, doesn't allow her to, once she gets to a certain point, it blocks her off. And Nancy and Dorset actually suggested that maybe Judy start by contacting Chris from Nemrick, as he might be able to manipulate our system a little bit to help with the way we do things. Um, so Pulteney, I spoke to Paul, the town manager, and they operate with the village of Pulteney and the town of Pulteney as kind of two separate entities. Their program is use it or lose it, so if you don't use your vacation time, um, rather than wiping it out at the end of the fiscal year, they give everybody till the end of August to use it, but whatever is not used is done away with and they start fresh in the new fiscal year. Um, they, he said they've had some hard, they've had a bit of a hard time enforcing this in the village as it's a pretty big change, so. He didn't get into details, he's just said that. Um, and then Rupert, just a really quick conversation with Andy, their treasurer, and she said they also have use it or lose it, um, however, you can carry over up to one week's vacation. Um, so they can, you can carry over up to forty hours, they do not do a payout, um, but if, you know, if you have an overflow that you don't use, you can carry it over, so those are all three very different options, but one thing that they do have in common is that it's all use or lose in some way. No other town allows you to take your full bank of vacation and bring it with you into the next fiscal year, out of these three towns. So, that was, those are the people I was able to get ahold of and I figured they were kind of our surrounding neighbors, so that would be a good place to start.
Okay.
Something to consider is that.
The way, do we have to bill the hours? Do you know how our system works? Do you have to work so many hours before you get it, or do you just get a wad?
It's a gifted system from my understanding, so, um, if you, the way it works is for one year of employment, um, you get, you get forty hours, eighty hours is for two to ten years and one twenty is for eleven to fifteen.
Okay.
So it's a gifted system, um, so in other experiences that I've had in other companies, when you gift the time, um, there's, it kind of eliminates the obligation to have to pay it out because it's not earned. It's at the start of your employment, you say, at the start of the year, it's, hey, you've worked X amount of time, you get X amount of hours, this is our gift to you. So if you don't use it, you don't use it, you know, it's like if somebody gives you a bag of cookies and you eat half of them and they go stale, and you're like, well, sorry. Could've eaten the cookies quicker.
Now you made me hungry.
So that's kind of a good way of thinking about that, whereas if it's like, okay, for every day you work, like, you get two extra cookies, so they're all yours and we, you have to have them. Um, so that's.
Okay.
That's, so that's my understanding, I don't know.
That sounds like a pretty, a good analogy, so.
Yeah, I mean, I would say whatever I, is something else to consider is that, okay, if, you know, factor, you have to factor into budgeting, like, okay, at the end of the year, we could be paying two we- full two weeks, um, to everybody on the roads crew, so that's, you know, six extra weeks in total, so that's, that's something to consider, it's, that's very nice, I mean, it's.
I'm not seeing that as a very common thing anymore.
It's, it's not super common, especially when.
Not to pay out, not to pay out for vacation, I'm not in favor of paying out for any of the unused vacation, what do you guys think?
No, use it or lose it.
Well, it must be, uh, uh, an auditor's problem because that is a liability against the town if it's carried over.
Exactly, I, I think that, yeah.
I mean, I think.
Especially to pay out for the vacation, I, I just.
I mean, and I could be, my mis- I could be misunderstood, but it seems like the issue is that there's so much accrual happening that it's kind of tripping out the system.
Yeah.
So I think if maybe there could be a way to, you know.
I would think that, my opinion is that one week carryover is more than adequate. Unless, unless you have some extreme circumstance that we could probably work with, but for just, you know.
I mean, like Paul and Pulteney was saying that they have situations, like, the big issue that they run into is that their roads crew is such a skeleton crew and they rely so heavily on all of their members, which I think we also have a similar situation, it's hard for people to get away.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, so here it is, if you have nearly a month of vacation time, and there's really only like one month where you feel comfortable to take it, that's where you run into the issue, but.
Well, I think.
The only situation where I think we could run into problems is our, our year starts July first. If we had a huge project that required the entire crew, uh, you know, though we were reconstructing a bridge and the crew were working and, you know, the guys came in and said, I got two weeks vacation, I gotta use or lose, you know, and and they're not gonna be there, then we would have to renegotiate our, our stance and agree to, you know, to potentially pay them, but otherwise, it's just impossible to budget for, I mean, we try to budget as best we can with the, the money we have. So with the year ending, uh, June thirtieth, what better reason to say, you know, guys, you got May or June or whatever, work it out, figure it out, and get your, get rid of your vacation time so that we're all square, uh, from July first.
The only other thing I wanna throw out without hopefully like creating a totally blowing your minds is that, I've done some research on this and there are some big companies out there that are like really kind of hip companies, they're offering what's called, what they're calling unlimited or flex vacation time. I'm just throwing this out, so what it is, is there's no official bank, basically, you kind of have the vacation time that you need to take within reason, it all needs to be approved. And so what this is doing is, it's creating, and so it's not like, oh, okay, come June, you're like, oh, man, I've got three weeks left to use, I'm gonna take three weeks off in June. It's more so people are using vacation time when they need it, like, hey, I'm gonna take this week long vacation now. So, just, I just had to throw it out there, cause it's like this new thing that's happening, just keeping you all hip.
Really different bookkeeping, really different bookkeeping, just.
Yeah, so that's the other thing.
Well, there's companies out there that says you will use half of your vacation by halfway through the year and you will use what you want of the rest of the vacation by the end of the year, or you get nothing.
That's all heavy, that requires heavy management, you know, to say, okay. But so, yeah, that was the only other thing that I found, that I was like, this is a fun concept.
And there's companies that shut down and say, this is part of your vacation.
Yep, we're gonna shut down for a week and if you wanna get paid, you take a week of your vacation.
Yeah, so, you know.
And it's really not that bad.
I mean, I don't necessarily think it's worth reinventing our whole wheelhouse, you know, I don't really need to change everything up, but just thought I should.
I would, I, I don't think we should pay out for any vacation that's unused. I think we have a pretty good vacation system that we can, we, we don't force them to take a full day at a time, right? We never, we don't.
I don't even think we enforce that, we, I mean.
I think we, they can take multiple hours at a time.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that, but half days are, I know are pretty common.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, we, if, if we don't, I, I feel very strongly about half a day of vacation is a variable viable way to use vacation.
Right, yeah.
I probably use half of my vacation, half a day at a time.
Yeah.
It's, it's a very functional way for me to use my vacation.
I would not go under half a day. You know, these deals of two or three hours here and, you know.
That's, that's gonna make accounting nightmare.
Yeah, that's gonna make an accounting nightmare.
Yeah, usually increments of.
And basically by the time you get to where you're going and back, it's half a day.
I mean, I think it's a good goal to keep in mind too, that you don't wanna make this too.
Let's make it not too, right.
Thing, um, you know, you don't want it to be too drastic, change, I think, just keeping that in mind, but.
But we've also been dragging our feet on this personnel policy.
And John, John's opinion was very good about trying to set some time aside to, to go at it. But, uh, for this right there, Kim, do we, do we think we wanna make a, a call on this right now? What about letting them roll one, uh, one week over? We could roll up to one week over into the next month and, into the next fiscal year.
I think that's fair, I mean, we don't wanna end up being their financial advisor.
Right.
Uh, uh, and, you know, who banks what and.
Right, yeah.
You know, it's just like this withholding, presently people are getting smaller refunds, cause they didn't adjust the withholding. But some people like getting withheld a lot, so they get a big refund, although they could've put that in the bank and got interest on it.
Exactly. But, I mean, do we want, do we wanna adopt a policy that says, you know, you can roll up to one, one week over, but that's, that's all you get to roll over?
I'd go along with that, one week, I would make them.
And no, no paybacks.
How are we gonna address the comp time?
Oh, so that part, I don't know.
Now, we, we have.
Got a couple individuals that are carrying.
From, from sick time or from overtime that they're carrying as comp?
I think the idea was overtime, so in an effort to, but see, I don't know, she, like what, what.
See, we don't, we don't.
Dorset was saying is they have the, their employees have the option, so if you work all, you know, which, somebody who has
They have the option too, eh?
Three weeks of vacation time.
That was, that was the only thing I didn't, I didn't bring that one up.
Just not much, there's not much left. Just the bottom numbers. My understanding, those are hours.
Right, right.
So these, this file, the one that's comp time hours.
Be that amount of hours.
Right, and, and that's what they're trying to keep track of.
And this was vacation time, he's carried over that much.
Right.
That much vacation time is three weeks.
And it's percentage and stuff, I'm not sure, see, so that's, that makes it harder, it's just gotta be.
Right.
They gotta simplify it.
Yeah, we gotta get.
Well, it's, it's percentage based because they're getting an hour and a half for an hour.
But you get an hour and a half of vacation for an hour, that's why it builds fast, but still, this, I mean, we, we're not set up like the state where you could, where you could have, you know, a whole year of sick time saved after twenty and thirty years of. Or, or the state of New York, for instance, I know people that save sick time for, you know, they could have.
Retire a year earlier, whatever.
Almost a year of sick time left.
Yeah.
But I, I don't.
Pope's office, yeah.
I don't think that, uh, I don't think that we wanna get ourselves into a situation like that, but I'd.
Well, we can't afford to, we're too small, if you had a three man crew and all of a sudden one guy walks in and says, I'm taking the next year off, then I'm retiring.
You better start replacing.
You don't have any, well, you have, you don't have any money in the budget to pay a, a fourth guy.
Right.
But you also see.
And you gotta immediately hire a, a third guy to take his place, so, that's a situation that.
Right.
You, communication and planning ahead work needs to be.
Also. So, you know, there's.
So they're working overtime.
Right.
By the way.
Yeah.
So that's where, now we gotta, what do we, what do we wanna do? What do we wanna do about comp time? We need to put a cap.
Do you already do comp time?
We needed to put a cap on comp time, we put, this was a vacation time kinda, right? That we thought we would carry over one week.
If we don't already do comp time.
We, we do comp time.
Okay.
So how much of the comp time can they carry?
That's the only way that we could figure out how to keep our budget intact, and, and somewhat intact, because if it does nothing but snow all winter, you, you can't budget, you can't plan ahead for eighteen snowstorms, so so to trade off the hour, hour for hour and a half of comp time during the summer, but during the slower season.
I would think that, that we, we should probably limit the comp time to the same.
But there was, as I was telling these guys, there was a town today, that their road crew did not come in till this afternoon.
Right, because there was no.
Because there was nothing until this afternoon, so, you know.
Right, but I, I mean, our guys were out grading frozen ruts off today.
Okay.
So that they could plow the roads.
So in order to, to do this, we need to also address the comp time issue too, so how much comp time do we wanna let them carry into the next fiscal year?
I think the comp time is gonna be our biggest issue, is how we're gonna try to handle it.
Well, it's pretty simple, comes to about the first of June, some guys might end up with the whole month of June off.
Right, well, it's, it, it's unfortunate that, that we've allowed it to get in there, but we have to, we have to backtrack on it a little bit, and we really have to design a policy around the best policy for the town. Unfortunately, there's, there's one employee that may not like it as much, because of the comp time that he's accrued, but.
Right, in order to bring things into line, I feel that we may have to write a check for our mistake, or whatever, and, and then go from there.
Okay, so that's, that's another option.
That's another option. Cause I mean, we've allowed it to go that far.
Right, to, to.
To go this far.
To get us back on track.
To get us back on track, we may have to write a check and.
And then establish a new policy, so that's.
Yeah.
That's, that seems like a fair.
The other thing that happens is that.
Executive session with our roads crew at some point, and figure out, tell them what we're thinking and.
You pay for their present hourly wages, but actually, their carryover is, was a premium.
From the last year's budget.
Yeah.
That, that alters it too. That's why we can't really carry over much.
Yeah.
Do we wanna, do we wanna think of, I mean, we're, we're going, we're tossing a lot of ideas around right now, do we need, do we need one more week, or one more session to, to lock this down?
I don't think it's that time, I mean, Judy wants to get it cleaned up.
She just wants to get it cleaned up, I think, so that Julie doesn't have to.
Okay, so, so it's not time sensitive that we need to act on it tonight?
Perhaps we can, I can let Judy know what.
Kind of recap the discussion for her and.
Maybe she can have, provide some feedback, just from her perspective.
I like Ed's idea about, you know, ponying up some money to, to bring, to level the playing field out, and then from now on, this is how it's gotta be. So anybody want to have any more discussion on this subject, or? Okay. Let's either plan a commission for them, or gonna, you're gonna do that? New business, does anybody have any new business?
I haven't heard anything on the wood house, I thought that the closing was going to be this week, but I have not heard, so when I speak to John tomorrow on the tar ball issue, I'll, uh, just bring up the woods.
This is something from Soborski and Pasha right here. Um, guess what, Chuck, this is all your, this is all the paperwork right there, I didn't even notice it.
There you go, Chuck.
Oh, okay, that's.
That's all the paperwork for the Dattley and Slagpile transaction. Ever look at anything? Start weekend of Friday, on that way, if you, if Thursday, you run out of hours, you don't. That's management, it comes back to me and to. But then, yeah, and then if it, if it, if it ends on Thursday, or all bad days, and they start working too.
Oh, right there.
Creative way of hoping.
Right there's a thirty foot.
That's all stuff you're gonna take care of tomorrow, Chuck?
It was supposed to.
So it was supposed to have been done?
Yeah, that wasn't supposed to be in there.
Okay, so.
Right there.
Yeah.
You should think what it is, or is it?
Is there any, uh, any other new business? All right, so, anybody want to adjourn?
Well, are we?
Please, I already signed.
That Judy asked that we, over the next four meetings.
Oh, John, John.
I just suggested that if we wanna, rather than take on the personnel policy on one chunk, we split it up into
Okay.
Certain number or sched- schedule to do
Yeah.
Six, seven pages, uh, um, meeting for, it's a thirty-seven page document.
That's a good idea. I did, um, after that email, I did devote, I did add executive session to the next several meetings.
Mm-hmm.
That's something.
And I, uh.
Absolutely.
Keep this.
Yeah, that's, this is your, your deal.
I'm in favor of doing, doing that, maybe starting this week.
I like to skip it, do it with the, the weather, if it's all right with you guys. But I think it's an important thing to just review, review some of these pages, and we can find the high points and, and get information on them if you want. And go from there. So, somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion, to adjourn.
Anybody wanna second that motion?
I'll say.
Okay.